So I feel like um. We're around the same age. Like T-Pain's coming to the fair. I know, I was like, I'm old now.
Like when you get, when you get retired to the fairgrounds.
It's so, it's like about to be sold out though. Yeah, he's still super. But that was like my era. All that was like playing and so I love when. I love like seeing people that like even though I don't necessarily know you personally, like I love to see people's like trajectory from. That time to being like real adults, because we're the real adults now, which is.
Insane.
Scary.
It's a weird, it's a weird. Moment in time where you don't look or feel the age that you are. Say like, I'm on my way to forty, which is wild.
I can't believe that. And I think that when I. Like was coming up and people were that age, they felt so. But I also feel like people were older, like I feel like people dressed older, like they just like lived life.
Yeah, it's a different, different vibes.
Feel like they just were. I always tell people, like I remember some of the girls in my class, like their moms coming in. They would have like cats on their sweater or like Halloween pumpkins and like be wearing like a teacher sweater. And I would, and now I would never do that. Like it's so, even the fashion, I feel like people dress like way older than they actually were. Like even when you look at how the, how old the Golden Girls. Were actually supposed to be. I think they were supposed to be like in their fifties or something. These fifty year olds now, they're still like in the club.
Snatched and also snatched.
And snatch.
And just.
I can barely make it in the club now, honestly.
One, a nap is required, right? There's no, by the time I get up from my nap.
If you do is for like.
And also, if I have to put on a heel, probably, like a tennis shoe, a low heel, this is.
I used to be a heel girl, like, and I still wear a heel. And they still don't bother me, but I prefer. I prefer comfort and so.
It's like, what are you gonna choose? My choice used to be the heel. Now I feel like my choice, if I have an option, is probably gonna be a flat or a tennis shoe.
Or going out and not wearing a jacket.
Also that, in the cold.
Cause did you go to Ohio State for undergrad?
I did.
Okay, so you had the same weather. I was in Athens. And we used to be out in the middle of winter with no jacket on, just with. Could never do that now, so I think our whole point is welcome to midlife. I did not introduce you yet, so folks. I wanna let you all know who you're listening to. We have Tiara Ross here, who's running for city council for district seven, so welcome.
Thank you, thanks for having me.
Sure, and this is your first in your, is it, so this is your first podcast ever? For the campaign.
This is definitely my first podcast for the campaign. There are, I feel like I've been in maybe one or two other straight audio podcasts. Very first video podcast for sure.
Okay, okay.
For sure.
So how are you feeling about it?
It's a little nerve wracking, but I feel like when I came in here, I was like, the vibes are.
This is where we record and we've been with them since the beginning of the show forever ago. They've always supported us and it's been really cool to see them like. Level up and now they have.
This building, is it owned by Evie Bishop?
You know, I don't know. That's a, a person that knows probably all the buildings in Columbus question, I have no idea.
Familiar with that landlord. A ton of buildings. In the city of Columbus, in fact, my, so my uncle is one of the owners of Soul to Go Cafe.
Oh, really?
And he is the owner of that building as well. Owner of a couple of other buildings that ended up in the nuisance world. My, my profession is where my profession leads predominantly, so I'm, when I saw his name on the sign coming up the elevator. I wondered if this was his building or not.
Well, so if you have any report, no, I'm just playing. I've heard good things about.
Yeah, I'm so excited about Soul to Go and it's crazy because we were talking about like going to OSU. Being out in the club and doing all the things, so the Hightower clan. They owned a ton of the clubs here in the city. And um now are just like, like too old. The Hightower family went to um my church home. We all went to church together, so my uncle and the Hightower brothers kind of grew up as brothers together. Um and so they now own a business, which is in, in, Will Hightower is the chef. Like his lifetime dream, so for my uncle to be able to partner with them to do that is wonderful. And to see a black owned business thrive in the middle. Super exciting, super exciting, and they just went to, um, I think they just went to reservations only. On the weekends.
Well, I gotta make a reservation then, I haven't, everyone else has been.
You must go.
For me, I, I'm liking that, I'm trying to eat at home more than like we got food at home.
For sure.
Mode right now, but now that the weather has broken, I think it's also like not wanting to be out in the cold. I'm definitely gonna go, cause I have heard very good things about the restaurant.
And I would say, like if you are. Wanting to like just conserve from a financial perspective, the price point. Is not high at all.
Yeah, sure.
If you ask, maybe.
Well, once this, once this is all. So you brought up a little bit about your upbringing. And I wanna talk to you about that, cause I um of course moderated the candidate forum a couple of weeks ago. And so you talked a little bit about how um about your grandparents' church and. Growing up in Columbus and you know, your grandparents raising you. And I want people to know a little bit more about, you know, your roots in Columbus and. You know, your background in your life, whatever you want, or you know, whatever you feel comfortable. Want people to know.
I am like a, a PGK, I guess is what you call it. Which is. Get a bad rep, but it, it's crazy because. I, while I am their grandchild, I'm the, I'm their oldest grandchild. Um, they had two children, my mom and my uncle. My mother got pregnant very young, she was about nineteen. My grandfather came here at a young age, so he pastored Trystone for fifty one years before. He retired and he is coming up on eighty six years old. In April, um but he came here in his like young twenties, my, my grandmother, I think. I don't even know if she was twenty yet. From Mansfield. From Mansfield, Ohio, came down here, um pastored a church, I think he was. An insurance agent, he tells me um at the same time, so he would, he would make just enough in the week. To pay for the bills and then everything else kind of went into building the church. And um so mom had me at nineteen and um I spent probably year one through six. Ish with her, um we lived off of Berkeley. My, my grandparents still own that home. Uh today, so we lived off of Berkeley in Livingston. I went to Saint Mary's of the Springs, which is right attached to ODU. Got kicked out. Because there was a, a little boy who was bullying me and uh so we just had to end it. Yeah, you had to do what you had to do and. You're gonna have to be dismissed.
We tried, we tried Catholic school, didn't work out either. That's a whole.
Exactly, I'd, I'd be happy to come back for, for that conversation, but. So li- yeah, lived with her and then, you know, I think that, I know that. It could be very difficult um being the only daughter of what was a prominent pastor. In the city at the time and then getting pregnant out of wedlock. That pressure. For her. Was just a lot.
Baptist also.
They are, and they, like people affectionately call our church like Baptist Kojic. This very like, it's missionary Baptist by ideology, but very cares, a very charismatic church. Uh my grandfather is a very charismatic preacher and so people are like, y'all not real Baptist for real. But I, like, in, in your self-reflection, right? I think originally you're salty, right? Like why? Why couldn't you take care of me? But as you grow older and start to experience the same pressures, you start to get it. A little bit on a deeper level and you can allot grace there and so. I like to say my mom just didn't have the resources that I had from a mental health perspective. All of that and so unfortunately enough, my grandparents were kind enough to. To take me in and raise me, my grandmother had already raised four of her seven brothers. Um, her parents passed away, well, her mother passed away early. Um and then her father was just not well enough physically. And so she was married to my grandfather at a young age, they built a family and while she was raising her children, she was also raising. Her four brothers and then took me in to again raise me. And so, I mean, queen mother. People affectionately call people like that, I would say she has been a lifesaver for me. Both of my grandparents have been lifesavers for me. I think I probably would have been a sta- statistic, but for them kind of taking me in and so. I'm a PGK, but I'm proud of it, I think that is where I learned how to serve. I learned how to care genuinely for people, learned about the benefit of benevolence to your community. I always have, I brought my best friend here with me, but we've probably been serving the homeless since we were five years old, right? Having those ministries in the church, learning how to speak publicly. All of those skill sets for me came through growing up. Learning your history though too, right? Living in Reynoldsburg where you have, you know, predominantly, I'm thirty seven years old at that time, predominantly. Caucasian communities and you can quick, very quickly get caught up in that and not understand your history and so the black church. Becomes kind of your foundation of understanding who you are, understanding your history and your worth as a black American. Um and so I would not trade, trade that upbringing for anything. Um but I think what happens is also when you are a part of leadership. In that way, you don't choose to be, because I'm, I was born into that family. But you take on some of that responsi- responsibility organically. And so you oftentimes just end up thinking like. I have to be this perfect picture of, of a, of a child or this perfect picture. Of, you know, and people will hold you to certain standards that maybe they couldn't meet themselves, but that's. The life that you end up having to live for so long. And um so you, I, I would not trade that experience for the world because I think it built in me. A care for community that inspires me to this day. Uh but it also comes with a little bit of its own baggage.
Oh yeah, I mean, one of my best friends is a pastor's kid, I grew up going to church every day. Which is why I don't go, I don't go until I see. Because I grew up going so much and I do remember the pressure. To, you know, make sure, why is your skirt not hitting your knees or? Do you have pants on? Did you come in here with pants on? Or just, I remember a lot of those things and I ca- I still carry those things with me. And I think I have to, I think it's an everyday exercise. It's been less so as I started to cre- I think, I do think that when I, when I hear people say like, when you get closer to forty, that something happens. Was like, how you care about what other people think about you, what they say about you, whatever, so. A lot of that church guilt, I think I carried in the first part of my life is now starting to be like, you know what? But I definitely like resonate with what you're saying about that and even just being, my grandparents raised my cousins. They raised my first cousins and I just remember the sacrifice. And I remember when my auntie would come around and just her trying to mother, but not really like being in the space where she could. And how my cousins ended up, both of my cousins are locked up. And so when you say what you could have become, I think that's very true because I think that like. If you were to ask them and the conversations that I've had with them, they always carry like. Something, right? Like I think that, that they've started to sift through whatever feelings they have about my auntie. Not being able to raise them, but I, I feel like I've heard them say that they've come to some of the same conclusions. That you have. And I remember being at my grandparents' house all the time and how strict they were. Cause they were raising us like it was like nineteen seventy five. When they raised my mom and my auntie. And so they were like super strict and so I think I really, I, I think I have some kind of understanding of like. How it is when you're raised by your grandparents, it's just, it's just a different level of, I think, like. Boomers are a certain way, but like the silent generation is their own thing.
Right, and so my, actually, my, my grandfather would be probably considered silent generation. He was born in nineteen thirty nine. My grandmother was born in nineteen forty eight. So she's at the cusp of it, I believe, and, and then you can oftentimes just see the differences. And kind of the lines that my grandfather will draw versus the lines that my grandmother would and I also just think. As a mother, as that, she is such a mother and has such a heart um for the folks that she raises. It allows her to, to be able to look behind a few layers that takes a while for my grandfather.
Yeah, and my granddad, he's eighty, turned eighty seven a couple of weeks ago. And he's just so quiet, like he doesn't really say a lot, like he, I think even masculinity for them. Looks a lot different than, you know, the generations after them. So what you said about that.
Complain about any of that. My grandfather is not quiet. But there are certain things. That he won't talk about versus, you know, things that he will and be super outspoken about.
Yeah, yeah, so who, who sort of, was it, was it some, uh an experience that happened to you or? Like um somebody that you saw or your grandparents that made you decide you wanted to be an attorney? Or was that, how did you come to that conclusion?
I um, so it was always find a way to, to give back. That was always the thing, um so you grow up just thinking. Whatever I enjoy doing, that is what I will try to mold into my ultimate purpose, which is to, to give back. To my community in some sort of way. I went to, so I graduated from Reynoldsburg High School and our junior year, we're able to choose like a thesis course. And there was a thesis in law course and, you know, you grow up and Law and Order. My grandfather and I, so I would probably say my grandfather is one of my very best friends, we have a very similar personality to one another. And he watched Law and Order all of the time, it was either Cowboys and Indians or Law and Order. Those were the two things he watched and so I would always watch it with him. And so I developed an affinity for like what I thought at the time law was and I was like, okay, well, let me try it. And ended up doing really well in that class, we had a mock child team that, and we won some competitions and I won some awards. And decided, okay, this is. Maybe I could do this and this would be the way that I give back and so. His name is Mr. Lanier, I will never forget him, was my thesis in law teacher and at the time, my guidance counselor was a woman named Mrs. Zimmerman. And um Ohio State had a moral scholarship, which is full circle moment right now in the space that, that we are in. And I applied for it and got it. Um and it's crazy, cause I also applied to go to Howard and applied to go to Hampton and all of the things and you're thinking, oh. I might go, I'm gonna go to HBCU and I got accepted to all of those schools, at the same time I got, you know. You gotta pay three hundred dollars to hold your seat at Howard. Same time I got a letter from OSU to say, not only are you accepted, but you got this scholarship whereby you're not gonna have to, to pay. And um so of course. Going back to my always wanting to give back, it's not only to community, but it's back to. My grandparents who I never felt worthy of the sacrifice that they gave to me, so it was, of course. Because they would have found a way to pay for my college education, but I don't have to.
And Ohio State's a great school, I mean.
I'm salty right now at the institution. But you would never, like the, the motto but for Ohio State is a real thing.
Yeah, and I think, you know, this whole situation right now, even with my own university, I'm salty at them too. And I don't know that the relationship will ever be the same, but. The one thing that I'll say is like I don't regret, I think, I think college just like equips you for. Life in a different way than maybe like, of course, I only know my experience because I didn't have to go straight into the workforce. But like I met my husband there and I mean, you meet your best friends and these people like. Stay in your life forever and so regardless of kind of where we're at right now, which is like. Feels like fuck you island, to be honest with you, I was like, thanks a lot, y'all. That part is the part that I try to hold on to. A little bit.
Yeah, and it was the community, at the time, when I was in undergrad, like the Frank Hill Center was still there, it was not, you know, two rooms inside of a building, it was an actual center. Where community was built and um you, as large as the institution is, we all found one another. Find your community and you're able to navigate through that.
I went to a few Valleydale parties. Back in the day, yeah, we may have been in the same.
Probably, walking that hill. To the Valleydale is crazy.
My husband's grandma lives. Sunbury, Brittany Hills.
Three and a half inch ridiculous.
For sure, so, okay, you go to law school. Graduate. I know I have limited knowledge of right, like what happens after law school. So are most folks dreams to go into corporate law or is it to go to the city? Like what made you decide, you know, I wanna, because I do think that there is this, like I work nonprofit. I know that if I was doing what I do at my nonprofit at a corporation, I'd be making double, right? Like you, I have a heart for serving people and I make, I've made personal sacrifices to do that. So what made you decide I wanna go work, you know, for the city, I wanna?
So I um, when I graduated from law school. There were a couple of things I was still doing, so I had a, uh my two L summer, I worked at a law firm called Weston Heard. And so when I graduated, there was still like consulting work that I could do with them and they did like litigation type of work, so it would be like slip and fall cases. But it was a small firm, the larger headquartered firm is in Cleveland and so they had a small litigation office here. Uh I was the only black person. In the firm and then there was only one. Woman attorney, yeah, of course, one woman attorney in the firm, she ended up leaving. And I thought maybe I wanted to, to work for them, I went to Cleveland a couple of times on work trips and. Met one of the African American partners there, his name was Hillary and uh thought maybe I would do that for a little bit. That did not work out and ended up at JP Morgan, it was right around the time all of the two large to fail banks were getting in trouble. So it was President Obama, there were too many drug cartels running through the banks, too many. Terrorist financing or- organizations kind of running their money through accounts at the bank and so. Banks needed a bunch of lawyers to help build up their compliance and so I started working in that space. Did well and ended up in the private bank supporting hedge fund and private equity clients, which are your uber rich. Like politically exposed person, there's a, a classification called ultra wealthy, which is just wild. Wild to think about and um Brexit happened and I ended up in Edinburgh, Scotland. I turned thirty years old by myself in Edinburgh, I was there for months and um. That is when uh I got, I always say Zach Klein slid through my DMs within like, people are like. And I'm like, you know what? No. But he uh messaged me and said, I think I have a cool opportunity for you and I knew Zach, I had known Zach for a long time. One, because he is a politician's politician, so he would always be at my church. Um I sang, I'm part of our music ministry, so I sing almost every Sunday at church. So you get to see him, you get to interact with him because my grandfather, you know, was pastor for a good majority of the time in which he was. You know, running for different offices and I would always say. We would always at least say to one another, like, at some point, we're gonna work together and um I remember telling him. I, I think, like I'm having, like a lot of perks, I get to do a lot of things, but I'm not sure. This is where I wanna make my life's work. Um I'm very interested in moving back into public sector work. And it was crazy, it was right around the time I, I got comfortable asking, cause people always ask you, tell me what you need, do you need anything? Like, like what can I do for you? Um and so I tell like my mentees all the time, like really get comfortable in making that ask. Because it was when I got comfortable making that ask that he was able to remember me when the time came for the opportunity to come back and so. He said he was like, it's a really good opportunity, it was called the Zone Initiative at the time, which is, is crazy if you think about um Prosecutor Favor. She was a part of the Zone Initiative at that time as well, Judge Page, part of the Zone Initiative at the time. And he's like, it's this cool mix of um community and being in the courtroom. Um so you're required to go to all of these community meetings, you're required to engage with folks and really try to think about creative solutions. To use Ohio's nuisance abatement law um to provide resolution to some of the issues that folks are seeing in their neighborhoods. And so I was like, this is.
So probably seemed like a marriage of.
Yes, everything you wanna do.
Of everything that you. Thought that you wanted to do.
Yeah, so I'm like, this is perfect.
Yeah, so now you're.
I gotta come back.
Cause you were still in Scotland.
I was still in Scotland, so I come back, I think it was October twenty seventeen. If I, if I remember correctly, October of twenty seventeen and um by April of twenty eighteen. I was going uh to the city attorney's office.
Yeah, and so now you're on the property action team.
Same team, so we rebranded.
You rebranded and this is the same. So what's your life day to day like on a team like that? I know you all focus on. Housing. Code enforcement, like nuisance properties.
So I right now am the deputy chief of that team, so there's two section chiefs, myself and then a man named Steve Dunbar is the section chief.
So you've been in that role for over ten years then?
I've been, no, so twenty eighteen, I will be, it will be seven.
Only work places for two years. And then we move on. So that's like an eternity, so you've moved up.
But the work in the, I, I, I'm sure we'll talk about housing at some point here. But when you look at when I started and now, it's particularly in the housing space and the importance of preserving your naturally. Naturally occurring affordable housing in the city, like all of that, all of that stock generally at some point is coming on our radar. Um and so when I started.
Naturally occurring.
Yeah, so you have um large apartment complexes that have been around for a long time. Right, and so the, the, when you think about rating housing stock, you can rate it poor, good, very, you know, very good. And some of that housing stock really kind of stays in the average to poor space and, and depending on. How a landlord or property owner cares for it, it could either be maintained as affordable, it's going to be affordable because. The housing stock's not good enough to, to sell it at a premium, right? Or it can end up being very derelict building. That you have to, to, to repurpose. Um or find something else for and so. Uh when I first started at the city attorney's office, I was the zone attorney for the south side and the east sides of Columbus. And so it was zone two, the city of Columbus is split up now into six police zones, then it was five police zones. And so the areas that I were assigned, was assigned to was zone two, which took care of the mid east, far east. And then south sides of Columbus, part of district seven. And so I served those areas, so I would um have roll calls, go to roll calls with police officers. And if you know anything about police officer schedule, there's first shift, second shift, third shift, and they have a roll call every shift. And so you would go just to develop relationships, to understand the things that they were seeing. And then you would take that same model and go to neighborhood organizations like area commissions or civic groups, if you didn't have a strong area commission in the area. And you would have the same conversations with individuals that were living in the neighborhoods about the things that they were seeing. Um and that's kind of seventy percent of our work would come just from hearing from what we call our client base, so it would be. You know, if we're meeting with CPD or if we're meeting with the Department of Public Health or if we're meeting with the fire department, they would give us cases. they would give us cases, cause you have the fire department that would say, you know, this particular building could catch on fire tomorrow. Right? Because of all of the violations of the state fire code. And so you would, you know, sit down with them and build investigatory packets so that you could hold property owners accountable for making those fixes. Or you would sit down with um, a patrol officer to talk about a drug house that was in a particular neighborhood that you were receiving complaints about to understand what was going on and how we could build a case to shut the drug house down. Or you would sit and talk to community members about a market, you know, and we would, I don't, affectionately is not the right word, but a shoot them up market, right? A market where folks, you know, lots of crime would occur, drug activity would be happening on the lot and you would try to understand exactly what types of operational fixes you could help the business owner put into place to mitigate some of that activity, right? Um, and you really start to learn like from the bottom up, what neighborhoods are going through and what people in neighborhoods are going through. And how to balance a resource to a neighborhood that maybe is coming up on our list for, for things that we need to take care of, but we also don't need to pull that resource from the community. So how do you start to balance a market, right? That could be the only place that someone can get to by walking to get juice or to get a snack or to get these things. But also you're, you're, you're selling things like drug paraphernalia, like glass pens and choreboard and, and you're incentivizing activity that is a nuisance to, to neighbors. And so how are you balancing both of those interests so that you can make sure that you're not um, not doing more harm or perpetuating harm to a neighborhood by trying to do the right thing and mitigating the violent crime?
Yeah, and I think there's important questions there too, like that are, because the word nuisance, right? Like in certain neighborhoods, when people who aren't from the neighborhood who move in, right, and they decide that something is a nuisance, what actually, then who gets to make the decision? And, and how do you, I mean, it's clear I'm talking about gentrification, displacement of people or new neighborhoods. New neighbors coming into the neighborhood, um, who don't necessarily reflect the folks who are already there, who are, you know, making reports or, you know, calling the police on people, et cetera, et cetera. How do you all try to navigate? You, you, you in particular, since you're, you know, you're the one running for city council, cause I think that also can speak to how you will show up as a council member.
Absolutely. I certainly understand the effects of over enforcement. And I understand how code enforcement can be weaponized in communities and how it has been weaponized in communities, particularly communities of color. Um, here in our city, uh, in fact. And I think um, using the markets as an example, I just had, um, I just went through a wonderful experience with the Livingston Avenue community. And um, there is a string of markets on Livingston Avenue and the area commissions. And I, I think we'll talk about this at some point. But you start to learn how reflective or maybe non-reflective our area commissions are of our broader community. And so they can become an echo chamber of their own, where you are hearing a lot of things from people that don't necessarily reflect the broad diversity of the community. And so you think that this is, this is the problem, what these people are bringing to you. But if you don't always gut check that and make sure that you're having conversations with other folks. That are outside of that, then, then you can maybe have a skewed perception of what the reality is. And so when I was working with the Livingston Avenue um, area commission and civic associations, they were at the brink of getting enough signatures to vote the precincts dry. Uh, which is a forever thing. You vote it dry, it doesn't come back online. Um, and so as you can imagine, oftentimes liquor sales are the sales that keep a small market in business. And so if you think about Livingston Avenue and that corridor, not a lot of large grocers that are easily accessible to people, right? And so if you're hearing, you know, from members of our commission about the issues that are happening and, and to know, I don't think nefarious intent, there were issue, there were things that were happening. But you never heard about the good or the benefit of having the market in the neighborhood until you had one lady who represented a nonprofit that had fifty renters, right? That were engaging with her and could tell her, yeah, like we, we use this market for a ton. Um, and if the, the market goes out of business, like that's an extra barrier for me, you know, to get, to quickly run in and get maybe something that's gonna put food on my family's table.
A barrier to people getting their needs, their immediate.
Their, their immediate basic needs met. And so they are, are, reach out to our office to say, hey, can you help us facilitate some sort of convening where we can, we can let the, the market owners know that these are concerns that we are having from a traditional safety perspective, right? And there are best practices that we've seen you all put in your court orders. And oftentimes we'll, we'll work with a property owner. If they're showing an intent to, to, to do things that are going to help mitigate some of the issues we'll see, we're seeing, we're working with them. Compliance is what we wanna see. Over enforcement of code is, is not something that, one, I, I believe in. Um, I wanna make sure we're working with folks to get to where we need to be. Um, and quite often I'm trying to keep a business running, if we can keep a business running. And um.
To keep, to make sure that, well, obviously there's the economic part of it, but also to. You know, to ensure that people aren't living in a desert for some particular. Um, because you do see several areas in Columbus where there's just no real amenities for people. And we also have, you know, our transportation um, issues that are trying to be solved, I think, um, in Columbus right now. So I think like.
Let me go back and let me finish that Livingston Avenue story, cause I'm excited about it. So you, so you take that and so that we look and we build in some terms, best practices for the markets. We bring the market owners to um, Rick and, the Rick and Becker Woods Foundation. Bring them there, we eat, have food and we talk about all of the, the issues that the community is seeing, but then we also say like, you know, it would be great if maybe you could get some fresh produce every now and then. And then while understanding fresh produce is hard, like if you're not a grocer and have, you have the ability to move food o- on and off of shelves, right? Like it's, it's difficult to do that, particularly as a small market. But because they cared about the community and, and you, you have to talk to all of the stakeholders, right? You can quickly think that a market that's not doing what you think it needs to be doing to, to mitigate some of the issues that you're seeing, that the owner doesn't care about the community. But we found out that when we're talking, all of us together, that we all largely have the same goals and there's a way to get to a place where you're still keeping a market that's providing a need to a community up and running. And you're also getting at the things, the operational uplifts that need to happen for that market to not experience the types of things that would get them in front of the environmental court for, for nuisance activity. So it was a very, I think, wonderful opportunity to work together with all the different various stakeholders in a community to come to a solution that works for the community.
Well, yeah, it works for, and I think that, that is like what needs to be centered in all of this work. It's like figuring out how to get to the heart of whatever the issue is, because it's very rarely something that is on the surface. It takes, it really does take talking to people. And I kinda wanna get to that. I know like on your website, it says that you want Columbus to be a city where every resident, no matter their background, can work, live and build a future. It sounds like the work that you're doing fulfills you in a way that you feel like you're already like engaged in that work. So when you think about how you might exist on city council if you're elected, how will you, what's your plan to bring this vision to fruition? Like if you had three things that you could focus on?
Um, three things that I can, I think the first thing is, is spot on to that, is really bringing government back to real people. Um, and I think that, I've seen it, I've seen it firsthand. I am at those area commission meetings right along with our council engagement people, right? And we're spending just too much time um, in front of people that aren't reflective of our entire community. Um, and so thinking creatively about how we can get into spaces and places that don't necessarily get the type of buy-in that our area commission or our, our resourced citizens and residents typically get, right? And I think that as a council person, I would have all of the resources. And so to expect someone to come to city hall in order to have time to interface with me is, is kind of unfair. Um, and so my goal would be.
Getting downtown in and of itself is just, that's a whole barrier. Like if you have a car getting downtown, like parking, going in, like it is unfair to expect for people to do that. And I agree with you as far as the commission piece too, is that, you know, when you think about it, there's an entire access. Like the time of the meeting or. Reasons why people can, can and cannot show up. Look different.
Right. And so when you, you ha- we have to rethink the, the entire infrastructure of how our city, the government is engaging.
Do you have like an example of what you would do to make sure that like you could ensure that folks' voices are heard? Like would it be the same kind of example that you used before in terms of like getting out there and?
I think you break bread with people. I think you go into, to third spaces that, that folks generally are gathering. But also like if someone wants to meet you in their backyard and they have four or five friends that they wanna bring to the backyard to discuss issues, I would love that, right? I mean, as long as it's not cold and as long as. As long as it's not raining, right? But, right, making it easy for folks um, to engage with you, to talk to you, to understand that you're literally one of them. Um, and not just reserving it for, you know, the privileged few, but like, are we having conversations with individuals who are justice involved and have, have come out and are, are trying to make their lives better but can't seem to get over the myriad barriers, right, that are put before them? How are we having those conversations and how consistently are we having those conversations? And um, that to me is one, how I wanna power my campaign, but also how I, how I want to govern and continue to govern. And I think I want it to be a cornerstone um, for, for my brand. Um, when, when folks think about me, it's how I've centered my work now. Um, there is never a property that I am working on or working with that I haven't gone out and gone to. I've been in and engaged in some of the most violent places you can think about here in the city of Columbus that, and where folks are dealing with such significant poverty. Um, and just trying to make it and asking questions that are more than just, is your landlord, you know, fixing your water? Is your landlord making sure your heat is on, but do you have access to food? How are your children going to school every day, right? Cause those, that's what builds sustainability from a safety perspective in a community.
Well, and trust, I think.
And trust, right? Like how, how are we getting at all of the various entry points so that we can build, build the bottom and lift, lift the bottom? Um, and so having conversations with folks where I can pull at some of that low hanging fruit even now, to get resources to them, to break down barriers of access, to eliminate barriers of access so that the resources are not reserved for the folks that, you know, have the internet and know and can wait two hours, right, before the sign in, oh, where the sign up for intake for a program opens and then is full in the next twenty minutes, right? Like how do you bring resources to people?
You ever get frustrated? In your job? What do you think that y'all could do better?
I'm a lawyer telling you about how I am working to break down and eliminate barriers for human services to get to people. To me, that is the num- the number one indicator of a broken system. Where you have people who have to step outside of their, and their hands are in fifty different places to try to help. Um, we are too smart of a city or too big of a city to not have the appropriate infrastructure to make sure that our resources are getting to everyone. To everyone.
So you mentioned having to have your hands and have, wear so many hats in order to like get something done. So we talked about one thing that you, cause I asked for three, so one, so. When we're thinking about the other two things that you might wanna do, I'm wondering if, if there's a through line there. Where there, you're in too many places to be able to be effective. Cause I know you do a lot of work also, like we've talked about housing, but like some specifics around that. Cause I also think that's one of the issues is that there are not enough people that are able to work on the massive housing issues that exist in Columbus because people are stretched.
Absolutely. And I think that the, the one thing is, I mean, we, this is a, a strong mayor city. Um, so we have an administration and we have myriad departments with hundreds of career workers in those departments that have built um, certain, I would say, they, they have a level of expertise in spaces that we have to lean on. Um, as a council person, and I think as council people, um, community folks don't oftentimes understand the role of council, which is really to be oversight over those departments. And so that is where you gotta use the hands and the feet, right, that our taxpayers are paying every day to do and execute some of the work. Um, I am in a space where I am the executor of that work. Being on council, you start to oversee some of that work. And so you can use your experiences in executing that work to inform where you think, you know, we can do better from an infrastructure perspective. Where you think, you know, budgets may need to be right-sided to support building the capacity um, of a particular department so that they can better do that work, right? That is where I think um, we as council people, if we're working in a system that's not broken, right, and fractured, that is where we get most, the most bang for our buck. And so when you're thinking about, you know, making sure that all of our resources are equitably distributed to everyone, that is one focus. Um, housing for all is another focus. I very strongly believe in tenant protections. I was honored to help write some of the legislation um, for our tenant protection laws, so source of income discrimination, renters receipt, renters choice, all of those things. And then we're now, and now we are looking towards, right, we've wrapped our, our arms or at least are trying to wrap our arms around tenants um, who are, because this market just incentivizes folks being taken advantage of, we have to make sure that we are building an enforcement machine behind that. We have the laws, our enforcement's not there yet.
Yeah, cause I was gonna ask you that. So you helped work on the legislation for that. And I was going to ask if there's any, do you see any of the seeds that you've planted with that? Have they started to come to fruition yet?
A little bit. I think that um, there's some pushing there that needs to happen. And again, i- if I'm on council, I'd be more than happy to do that pushing. I think I've developed relationships with the administration that will help me do that in a way that's not burning bridges, but building bridges toward getting that work done. Um, but it took a, it took some pushing, even from our office, right? We cannot prosecute unless we have an investigator. Right? And so, you know, asking the administration, hey, we need people to be able to investigate these crimes in order for us to enforce them. And so I remember being um, in our section chief's office and there was an apartment complex, Morris Glen, I think was the name of it. And there were letters going around basically saying, we are no longer taking section eight. And I'm like, well, that's interesting, right? But we had no investigators to do it. And so me, so I'm like.
How did you get wind of that? Did like somebody call and to the office and tell you? Ask a question, like why?
No, I mean, again, we're out in the community a ton. And so oftentimes we'll get phone calls that say like, hey, can you help us with this? But also, um, council member, former council member Favor, I did a, a good job at least educating the community on these new laws that are available. And so people would start calling and saying, hey, I'm dealing with this particular issue. At, at this point in time, I believe legal aid even may have tipped us off like, hey, we're working in this community. Is there anything that we can do? And for a minute it was like.
Owner that was what, trying to scare people into thinking that they weren't taking section eight?
They, they thought they could no longer take section eight. Yeah, and so um, the benefit of, of having worked with so many property owners, you have like three or four attorneys that do a good amount of this work on the defense side. And so you can quickly find out who the attorney is for this apartment complex. But the problem was, do we, do we sit on our hands and force this tragedy? Because we think that that would light a fire. And so you, and I, there's one of the biggest frustrations that I have sometimes with our city is that, you know, we'll know what we need to do, just won't do it until it's a fi- like literally until the short earth is burning down.
It's a five al- five alarm fire, is that?
Until it's a five alarm fire. Until it's a five alarm fire.
So what you're saying is, is that when you're on council, you're going to try to push some things.
Yeah, we have to.
Reactive.
We have to, we have to do that. And um, so I remember being like, you know what, I'm at least gonna send a letter. Because at the end of the day, there's a law that's being broken. And maybe if I say that our office has been made aware of this law that's being broken, we could mitigate some of this harm.
Yeah.
And so that's what we did. And the letter was rescinded. And so just like that, you're preventing six, six, a sixty unit apartment complex, which is probably what, sixty times three if you mash, if you use the average family size? Um, one hundred and eighty people, right? That you're preventing from from not having housing just by saying, you know what, I know we don't have the full machine yet, but we need to do something.
Do you feel like, I know Shannon was, Shannon Harden, um, was on a couple, maybe it was last year, talking about zoning. And he talked about how there were so many like antiquated zoning laws on the books that were keeping Columbus from being able to make progress. Is it a similar situation? Are there like certain things within housing that are laws that are like, why is this still a law? Because it creates additional barriers or like they're old laws or?
Yeah.
There are things that exist like that.
Yeah. And I think, I mean, the zoning code in and of itself is directly related to your ability to build housing and what type of housing you can build in a certain area in the city of Columbus and also how quickly you can get a deal done. And so we talk a ton about needing more affordable housing. Shortening the timeline for a developer to get that project up is directly correlated with how much money that developer has to spend. And the more money a developer has to spend, the more that those fees and charges are passed down to a tenant.
Yeah.
Um, and so thinking about ways to do that. And having seen like been, having been in a zoning meeting in an area commission where a developer has had to come back for three months in a row, right, to talk about small things that maybe don't necessarily, I mean, they matter, right? Everything matters. But like, does it, when you're thinking about the the larger benefit, right, that that development will have, it slows down the process and it adds a ton of money?
Well, let me, I hate the, I hate the phrase devil's advocate, cause that's what I wanna do. People are, I think rightfully suspicious of developers and how they've seen them sort of like exist in Columbus and other big metropoles and places. And even like, you know, I'm from a small town and we're seeing developers come in and people are like, wait a minute, what's going on? My town doesn't look.
Right.
How it used to look. So in your seat, if you're elected on council, how will you ensure that people, that you're really like holding developers to account to make sure that like the city can develop at the level that it needs to and at the speed that it needs to, because it's a lot of people moving here and there's already, there's already not enough housing. Um, but also ensure that like regular citizens aren't, for lack of a better word, screwed over.
Yeah, and I think you, I think you can kind of build that into the process, right? These are, these are the city's expectations on the front end versus a developer learning about a neighborhood's expectations in the middle of the process. You can move all of that kind of up and you can work with community members to understand what those are. Um, I know that the Near East Area Commission has their own kind of development standards that they like to see and they've built that. And they, and these are, these are our expectations. So having them and having them be available, when you talk to folks in the building trades and developers, they largely are like, we wanna work with the community. It's the gotcha moments that um set us back a little bit. So if we could have better insight into what the expectations are on the front end, then we can, we can try to work towards those. And I think you can, you can do those things together. Um, and I think we're disjointed a lot in in how that process looks. And so the the disjointed feel of it follows through the entire development.
Yeah.
Um, but it is also too, what are our expectations about our developers pouring back into the community, right? You're gaining a benefit by building here. Um, and so how are you giving back to the community that you're gaining a benefit from? What does that look like?
Right. Cause another, you know, big conversation in Columbus is the tax abatement issue, like, um, you know, developers are given tax abatements and then we don't see the benefit, you know, to community members.
Yeah.
So I think that people are like super concerned about that. So when, you know, they hear, you know, someone like you running on a housing platform, housing for all, there's a lot of questions that come up, so.
Absolutely.
I appreciate, you know, us having the opportunity to touch on that. Um, third, what's third in terms of what you wanna focus on?
Sure. I um, public safety is a, is is a big thing. And I think that I have had the opportunity to really work with our division of police in trying to put community policing back into the culture of the academy. Um, because I think somewhere they were too focused on being defensive tactics, right? Are too focused on kind of swooping in like a helicopter and 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 breaking up all the fights. And making sure that they understand that being in your community and part of the community is an expectation as an officer. It it is both a requirement and an expectation. And so um during the the George Ford Civil unrest here in the cinema, I talk about like waiting until there's a, what is it, five?
Five alarm.
Five, five alarm fire, like literal five alarm fire was a full circle moment for me.
People were hitting the button on that for a long time.
It was a full circle moment for me because when I started in twenty eighteen, the mayor had commissioned a safety committee. Um, and some of the same people that ended up on the civilian police review board now that I liaison um were on that safety commission. And so I remember a ton of recommendations coming out of that safety committee, some of which are just now being implemented today and maybe weren't even looked at until.
Well, you mentioned speed. You know, people, including myself, are very perturbed by the speed in which like bureaucracy operates, right? Um, so yeah, I know what some of those recommendations were. And then you see sort of like, well, this is why we needed them. Because we're in this moment now. And like, we just, you know, we talk about George Floyd, but there's been so many people who are, you know, are or were Columbus residents who have been harmed
Yes.
um, by the police. So when I think about what it looks like in terms of policing in this city, um, there has to be a culture change of policing in general, right? Because the origins of what the police meant, particularly in black communities, were to over police harm and and, you know, ensure that people stay in line by any, by any, you know, use of force necessary.
Yeah.
And so when you talk about some community policing and your role um, or your, what your role would be on on council, what would you do to push to really? Um, I know right now there's gonna be a ballot initiative around um community safety.
Yeah.
So I I'm interested to know like, you know, your specifics around what you would do to try to implement more of that community policing in our community.
Sure. So I was able to co-vision and co-found the Community Immersion Training Program um that is happening right now. It's a one hundred and ninety-two hour training program that all, every um officer has to go through during both their academy time and also their probation. In fact, today, I was um facilitating community roundtables at the academy, which is just one part of Community Immersion. Obviously, building that capacity, cause what I hear a ton is, you know, the new officers, starting them at the very beginning and having them understand that this is a requirement and this is something that we're going to expect of you in order to matricu- matriculate successfully through your career as an officer. But also, we still have some of that old culture, right? Because you have officers that are working on the force for twenty and thirty years and it's very easy to get jaded and to get into your own kind of thoughts, right? And so one, expanding that to 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 provide that same training to our officers that have been on the force um is is one thing. Um, but again, I think that, you know, a lot of harm also occurs because officers are not being taken care of either in the way that they should be. And so when you think about like technology and having technology fill in the gaps so that it doesn't take three and four hours to write up a call for service, right? So that, you know, when an individual does call for an officer, because I do think when you have conversations with people um in 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 communities, they're gonna say, yeah, if I'm in danger, I wanna be able to call the police. I just want the right officer to respond, not the wrong officer to respond, right? Um, and so what does that look like? How do, how are we using our technology to help officers to do a better job? And also help officers not to be so bogged down with the paperwork, right? That they can't actually police well, right? And so I think from a mental health perspective, right, freeing up that headspace so that they can think clearly about how they're engaging is beneficial and is a harm reduction method that we can use to our benefit. Um, I think, I think building infrastructure around alternative response. Um, because at the end of the day, the reality is, they're the only folks that are on the streets twenty-four hours a day. And so when we're talking and we're learning about things in community immersion, we say, you're gonna oftentimes be faced with an individual that's going through crisis, not necessarily someone you need to enforce the law, right? With, and so how do we build your tools to be able to effectively do that? Because we're going to have to until we have an appropriate infrastructure for that alternative response. And I think your officer is gonna say all the time, yeah, we don't wanna be social workers. We don't know how to do that work. We don't wanna do that work. We would much rather have someone that's more equipped to do that work do it. But if we level set today, we don't have social workers that are out twenty-four hours a day. And we need to be able to build that integration and build that infrastructure so that we can do that. So those are things that I would absolutely champion um when I am on city council, if I'm, you know, blessed enough to receive the vote of the community. Is making sure that we have those resources so the officers aren't the ones that are charged with responding to that type of thing. And then also thinking about ways that we can increase um holding officers accountable that do harm our community, right? So we have the civilian police. We have a civilian police review board. We have an inspector general, right? That was a ballot initiative. The people said we want um internal affairs moved out of CPD and we want an independent um investigator of some of these things. I happen to serve as general counsel for that in inspector general. Um, and I'm, you know, you start to see trends, like it's a new department, it's a new board, and you're starting to see trends of what we are seeing. Where our officers are generally speaking, not doing a great job. Um, the powers of both, the civilian police review board and the inspector general are a tad um weak.
Yeah, that's, that's, that was going to be my question is, is in your seat as um a council member if elected, like what will you do to push to ensure that that um within the powers that you have to ensure that that board ha- actually has teeth? Right? That they can actually do something that is, you know, meaningful enough the community feels and like hold, hold folks accountable.
I think part of that really is a continuous learning experience. Um, I've, I've learned a ton just by being a part of that. But I don't, I don't see where we're coming in and having a hearing about how successful, a public hearing about how successful our civilian police review board and the Department of Inspector General is, right? Like, what are, what are their issues? What do they wish they could do more of? Where, where are we um feeling like that we're maybe just kind of moving paperwork along versus actually making a difference, right? What does that look like? Do we need training uplifts, right? Do we need, as sometimes you think like, the police might know more.
Yeah.
Right? Than our civilians do. And so do they know exactly what they need to be looking for to hold, right? Cause the CPD is not, if you, if you say, oh, yeah, we're, uh, we are going to find this particular act of an officer, we're gonna unfound that. Like that, the police aren't gonna say, oh, no, you should have.
Yeah.
Right? And it'd be like, agreed, right?
Right.
And the leadership at CPD is is great. Um, and I think, you know, when you, in every organization, your leadership is largely, from an ideological perspective, gonna be on the same page. But when it trickles down to the folks that are boots on the ground, that's when you start to see disconnects.
They're gonna, the leadership is gonna be in lockstep in general around strategy. But when it, I think you talked about this of people kind of being in their jobs for a long time or having an idea of what they think a police officer does, um, et cetera, et cetera, makes it difficult in terms of implementation. So it sounds like you are willing to take those things on as issues.
Yeah. And understanding like, when leadership, like our chief oftentimes wants to be able to do something from an accountability perspective. So how do we walk alongside her to help her get to that goal?
I mean, and again, I think, you know, if we're being real, there's a problematic police culture that doesn't just exist in Columbus, but across this country.
Absolutely.
And so I think it is really difficult to be the person that comes in and says, I wanna hold somebody accountable. And they're like, well, we don't, what do you mean, we don't do that?
Right.
So, I get it.
Yeah, it's hard.
And I think, and I think like, you know, me as a, as a citizen, I wanna see more, you know, more done there because I've just sat across from too many moms on this show over too many years. And they make me cry every time because it's like the tears, I've had moms on who are still fighting for their kids. And so that for me, I don't really always talk about the things that are important to me, but that's what I wanna see changed. Cause I don't wanna see, you know, downtown um a bunch of people who are upset, who are rightfully upset, right? That was, you know, I think all of us were traumatized by that. And, and I felt like I understand why this is happening because we've been asking, we've been asking, we've been asking, we've been asking, nothing. Nothing substantive changes.
And those are the conversations that like we had to have. I was having conversations, you know, I would, I would literally be at the protest the day before and then be inside of police headquarters trying to meet with them and tell them about the importance of a training like community immersion. And then someone would say back to my face, well, we just wanna make sure you know this is not a black and white thing.
Uh, well. Yeah.
Right? Right? And then you have to.
I mean, and that's, but that's a baseline, right?
Yes. But if you can't get this right, then we, there is no reason why I'm here talking about this, right?
Cause you have to be willing to admit.
You have to.
Your, and your bias, right? And your, we talk about that a lot.
And it, and it is sometimes, you know, their experience with me, they're like, I was like, I'm sure you all at least base level respect who I am. I was just out there, right? And and the folks are not, like, this is not personal against you. Like, folks are protesting against systems that have for the entirety of this, the history of our nation have harmed black and brown people.
Yeah.
Right? And so because you maybe have been doing better for the last two or three years, that doesn't take away.
People have generational.
Yeah.
I think trauma around.
Yeah.
Law enforcement and policing. And so, you know, and and the other piece is like, I think sometimes it's hard for people when they don't live in a community to, and they're not around, you know, they live in a community where they don't see people who look like you or me or any other, anything else on the identity spectrum. They're in a place that's kind of monolithic in terms of identity. It's hard to then say you, how do you not see humanity in people? So I have to ask you questions to take a sharp. So we're talking a little bit about systems. And I've been thinking about this interview for a while because there's been a lot that's been said. It's been in mainstream news and in blogs and things about you. And I just wanna say first that sitting across from you as an, as another black woman, like, I have like empathy for you being in this seat and being under a level of scrutiny. Because I think that like, there is something about being a black woman and like people not liking the idea of us not being perfect.
Sure.
I think that there is definitely something else that we have to show up in a certain way. And so I've been sort of like not. Been excited about this interview because I knew that I had to sit across from you and ask you questions about things that for me feel very intrinsic around the idea of being imperfect and they're still valid, right? So I wanna say that first, I want you to understand like where I'm coming from. Um, there's been news stories about your parking ticket.
Yeah.
There's been stories about your time in Ohio State. Do you want to, I wanna give you the space to address those questions. Because as we talked about before, um, a ten second sound bite or an article doesn't necessarily get to the heart of, you know. So I wanna make sure I give you the space to respond.
I appreciate that. I think that um for me, it's important for me to to just be accountable in 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 this moment.
Yeah.
Um, having parking tickets pile up is not something that I should have let happen. And the parking tickets are paid, right? I've paid them. And that was an acknowledgement that I needed to get that done and we got it done. Um, it ma- it, and it also, you know, to, to take a step beyond that, now I'm just strategizing, right? Clearly I don't have a job where I can just park at a meter and, you know what I mean?
I've had my share.
Yeah, just park at a meter and, you know, come back out, get my car or come back out and re-up the meter or even get my phone, right? Like you're in a, a hearing that goes over and you just forget. Not an excuse. So you have to strategize. So now I'm strategizing around, um, how do I make sure I get somewhere early enough so I can park in a garage? Or, um, maybe walk. And so it makes it even more salient when we talk about like barriers, not forcing people to come downtown or forcing people to come to us. It makes it even more salient, how many barriers there are, even for a person like me who's largely resourced. To be parking. But at the end of the day, that is something that I'm going to own up to. It was a mistake. And there are things and things that I am putting in place so that we don't get there. But at the end of the day, it's a struggle for everybody. It was a struggle for me and, um, I have paid them and I look forward to, you know.
Moving past.
Moving past it. And, and I appreciate you al- allowing me to talk about the things that I care about and the, the, the things that I wanna see, um, happen in the city. Because I, that is what I look forward to, being able to pivot and, and talk about that. I don't think that, you know, me having those tickets reflects on or negates the amount of work and the amount of service that I've given to this community for nearly a decade.
Yeah, I don't, I don't necessarily even think, I don't necessarily think it negates your service and the service that started back when you were somebody's grandbaby. Um, I don't think that that negates the service. The things that I have seen is people say stuff like, well, if I had parking tickets, I'd be arrested. She thinks she's above the law. Do you think you're above the law?
Absolutely not. If I did, I probably either, I did not appeal any of those tickets, right? Like I paid the extra fees. Cause you know, at this point, like I was probably paying double or maybe even triple. Ticket. And so, no, I don't think that I'm above the law. It was a mistake. And I'm human enough and big enough to say that. It was a mistake. Uh, many, maybe some people might say. And I can, agreed.
Well, yeah, and I, I, I want, I wanted to ask you those questions and also center your humanity in that people do make mistakes. And when I sit here and have this conversation with you, I just wanna tell you that I don't think it's all about you. Um, I think that people, the conversations that I've seen have that, that, that I have seen people having or that I have been a part of is people are upset because they think that there is that you, you have been handpicked to be on council and so, or be the, the democratic nominee. And so I think that that is where some of the vitriol that people have. Um, the repeated, you know, stories and all of that. I think that some of that is where that's coming from. I don't think that is necessarily all about you. And so I don't even know if I'm necessarily looking for a response there. I'm just saying, I don't think that you should necessarily be internalizing all of that because I don't think that, I think that you are just the unfortunate person sitting in the seat of a, of a lot of people in the city who are upset of what, about what they see as them not having the opportunity to really engage in a democratic process.
That's fair. I, um, you know, it's hard to not internalize some of it and I've, I've tried to. I'm not waiting in the, in the social media comments. Trust me, I am not. Uh, I like to hear high level, like, you know, what's going on and, um, and that, that really is it. Because I, you know, I did not raise my hand to do this because I thought I was perfect. And I don't think that I would be able to do a service to this community. And then, and, and also, also try to be perfect. I think I gotta show up as my authentic self. It's impossible for me to do that. And I think that's where my juice is, right? Like I need to, you need, you have to show up as your authentic self. I think what folks should know though, is you can be upset with systems without tearing people down. I can be upset with the system right along with you. Right? We probably have some of the same gripes.
Yeah, I'm sure.
But I'm, I'm really here. I really am here to serve my community because I've seen, I have seen firsthand what people have to go through every day. I've seen that. I've had to evacuate on Christmas Day. Had to walk up and down steps with three and four inches of ice while it was literally raining inside of buildings that people had made their home, right? The people who qualified for so many resources didn't have one of them. And it just took someone being willing to say, there are dots that we can connect here. That people don't have to live, that people don't have to live how they're living. And we are in the best position to change that.
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think government is in the best position to change that. Community is in the best way to change that. And you know what I've been sitting with a lot is you mentioned not tearing people down and I was reading this woman's Instagram post and she said that people have to love the community more than they hate the state. And that's the only way that we're gonna be able to get to the level of like freedom that we deserve to be at. Because I don't think that like we can achieve all the things that we want to achieve if we are always like hitting at the darkest corner of people and a person. And so I was left with, when I read that, I was left on my own with a lot of things to reflect on. How to be a better neighbor. How to be a better person. How to allow for those pieces of my imperfect self to be out in the open for people to see. And really what I hope happens is that regardless is that some of this paves the way for folks to understand that anybody is, well, not anybody, but some things are just. But what does it look like to, what does it look like to like make a mistake and run for office? And what does accountability look, like, like when we're asking people to be accountable, what does that look like? What does that mean? How does that function depending on where you are on certain, cause I think there's a lot of nuance to this conversation. But I appreciate you sitting here with me having that conversation. Because I wanted you to speak for yourself and speak outside of like, you know, a pe- a piece of paper is different than seeing somebody live and live in color and talking about something. And, you know, I know probably at this point I have a reputation of like getting folks up there, up here and at, just asking them in their face stuff, like, I'm definitely like, that's how I am in real life, but how do we, how do we become better neighbors to each other? And better community members and, and again, like allow space for people to be human.
And I think it, I think it's rooted in, in, in love, right? Like community is built through love and not through hate. And you can hold someone accountable in love. Do you know what I mean? You can absolutely do that. Um, that's where you, that's where you kind of move the needle. I'm just not, I'm not one that is gonna lead, lead with hate. And I think you have to to get those results.
I think that we're at an, we're at an interesting point right now where I think that people are so upset about a lot of different things. And I think that people are looking for like, what is the solution? And how do I, how do we best hold our electeds count- accountable? How do we like get the results that we need? Folks are struggling. I think that we're all trying to figure it out, but.
Community to me is a solution to it all. And I, I will tell you like I can, all of us who are, who are running for this seat can strategize around what our, you know, campaign pillars are going to be and the, and the things that we want to do. But if we're not leaving part of that list blank for the community to help us fill in, I think we're doing the community a disservice. But I think largely the community leads us to the solutions, right? And, and then we work the strategy. To deliver it, but if we have to first start by being in community. Right? And so that's why I led with bringing government back to real people. We have to be in community, not representatives of who we are, but actually us. So that you know me. So if I'm your council person, Taria can say T, era, or T, whatever you wanna call it, what like, this is, th- these are the things that I need. And I can say, no, that makes sense to me. Let's, let's start talking about how we get that done. Let me tell you what I've tried to do and, and, and those barriers, right? So you know what your advocacy levers are, where your advocacy levers are. Um, or let me tell you like, I haven't even, I haven't tried that. Thank you for that idea, right? Like, and I think that again, everybody wants to show up as representatives of who they are. But if we can show up as our authentic selves and live in authentic community with one another, I think we can get to where we need to be.
Yeah. Well, I'm glad that when you mentioned bringing government back to real people. I'm glad that I'm, I am, I couldn't imagine how you have been feeling. But I hope that again, this, and I hate that, I hate to say that because I don't want anybody to be a sacrifice so other people can be better after. But I hope that this has been an experience that one shows, shows people that they can show up authentically. And I appreciate you for being a real person on this show. I bet you didn't wanna come on here and cry. I cry all the time on this show. That's, but, but, but I have to get comfortable with that cause that's who I am. I'm a crier. So I appreciate you for coming on here and, and showing up as yourself. And I am you know, wishing you all the best in this campaign.
Thank you.
And, you know, appreciate you for coming on this.
Thank you. I appreciate you for having me and the care. I told you this in a text message, but I'm serious. People don't have to care for you in these moments and you cared for me, so thank you.
Well, of course.